Okay, good eve- Good evening, everyone.
Buenas tardes a todos, bienvenidos. El Distrito Escolar. Se está llamando al orden a las cinco treinta. Requiere que la Mesa Directiva. Necesita y- La Mesa necesita de la Directiva al inicio. Estamos aquí para apoyarlos. Así, ocupar ayuda. Ahora, Clerk Eliana. Buenas tardes a todos.
Compañanos esta noche.
Ahora tenemos Trustee Smith Folds. Por la opción. Desde enero veinte, me presento al primer, cero veinte miembros, con un anuncio cinco cuatro nueve cinco tres, que es un cuadro de- Y cinco locaciones con- El miembro tiene que ser públicamente referirse a otras secciones que se tienen que tomar, si son individuales, para en orden, para poder en diferentes locaciones y generalmente los miembros de la Mesa Directiva y el- Trustee Smith Folds, por favor, disclose. Si hay alguien en el cuarto, que está, que está en el cuarto. Creo que este es tan- Yes, I can hear only you now.
Okay, so, I'll just repeat it. Tonight we have Trustee Smith Folds attending tonight's meeting remotely on a just call option for individual board members. Until January first, twenty twenty six, in accordance with government code five four nine five three F, a board member may attend remotely, provided that at least a quorum of the legislative body meets in a single location within the boundaries of the jurisdiction. The remote member must publicly disclose before any actions are taken, whether there is individuals eighteen years of age or older present in the room at the remote location and the general nature of the members' relationship with the individual. Trustee Smith Folds, please disclose before each vote if there is anyone in the room with you. Thank you. And now moving forward to access translation in Zoom, please click on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. If you are here in Dijon and need a headset for translation, you may pick one up in the back corner of the auditorium. The board is about to go into closed session, but before we do, we are here to listen to any public comment on the closed session items. Individuals wishing to speak on closed session items listed, if you are here within the auditorium and you haven't done so already, please submit a WCCUSD public comment card, which you can find at the entryway table. And if you're participating via Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand in Zoom app. If you are accessing the meeting by phone, please press star nine. The time allocated to each speaker is just two minutes. The total time allotted is one hour. Speaking time should not be transferred from one person to another. There is no substitution of speakers. We alternate between Zoom comment and in-person comment. The public comment period is a safe space where diverse viewpoints may be expressed civilly without interruptions or intimidation. Please listen attentively to each speaker's comments and respect their time as if it were your own. Be open to another point of view if one is offered. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items pretended, presented in public comment. The items listed on the closed session agenda tonight are- Um, disco- Are A to disclosure of items to be disclosed in closed session. Government code five four nine five seven point seven. Will be liability claims to student discipline stipulated expulsion case two five two six zero two. Public employee performance evaluation conference with legal, with labor negotiations. So do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment, Mark Mitchell.
Good evening, Clerk Eliana, President Reckler and Board. I've given to Genesis to distribute to all of you the tort claim forms for Ms. Teresa Griffin and for Ms. Sonia Perez, the teachers that were wrongfully denied their day in court a few weeks ago by the Business Services Director. I'm asking and pleading with you to please do justice by these long-serving educators at Stige Elementary. They have filed claims as of January of last year. They were ignored. They filed a tort claims form in April to the interim superintendent. That was ignored. We, we had to file a claim in court. They were there nine months pregnant, Ms. Perez, to make her case in court. They were denied their day in court by the shenanigans of an unauthorized representative that showed up from the district to talk and talk and talk until the court's day was over. I've given to Genesis for distribution to you the pictures of the Stige facility that was where all of their personal belongings were taken out, destroyed at the direction of the interim superintendent with a mechanical claw. Their workers, pictures of workers with no protective equipment, belying the explanation that there was some danger or toxic conditions. There was none whatsoever evidenced by the fact that all the workers had no protective equipment on. The, the belongings of the teachers were destroyed, pulverized. This was all memorialized by Mr. Don Gosny. The things were taken in a mechanical claw into a truck and, and bust past the Booker T Park where the children were enjoying the summer program with no protection for them or the other members of the community. Please do right by Ms. Griffin and Ms. Perez, who's now entering her maternity leave to have a baby. We need to do justice by these teachers quit this mean-spirited persecution of long-serving educators and pay them for their belongings. I've also included pictures of Ms. Perez's room and all of her belongings that were neatly stored in her closet, thus showing there was nothing dangerous about their condition. They could have been retrieved, but the interim superintendent refused access over and over. Please do justice and vote six thousand nine hundred dollars to Ms. Teresa Griffin and six thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars to Ms. Sonia Perez. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Francis Cortez. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board members. As you head into closed session, I want to reiterate everything that was already expressed by our executive director, Mark Mitchell. It's been two weeks since we last left the Richmond Superior Court with our long-serving educators of Stige Elementary, Teresa Griffin and Sonia Perez, who were both left in tears as a result of the proceedings of the day when their original claim was ordered by the judge to go into mediation. There was no process followed for a authorized representative of our district to engage in that, you know, time waste. Again, as you head into closed session, I hope that you all consider ending this chapter and restoring the, the tort claims to their full amount as requested by these long-serving educators of West Contra Costa Unified. Have a good night.
Is that it for public comment? Well, thank you, everyone, for your public comment. This concludes our public comment, and we will now adjourn to closed session, and we will reconvene at six thirty.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the open session of the November fifth, twenty twenty-five regularly scheduled board meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District. The board is on a recess from closed session, and I'm calling open session to order at seven oh three P M. Board policy nine one two three requires that the clerk of the board have at least one opportunity to lead and run a fully, a full regularly scheduled board meeting. Tonight, please welcome Clerk Eliana as she leads tonight's meeting. We're here to support and encourage you. Please don't hesitate to ask for help and clarifications if you need it.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. So tonight, we have Trustee Smith Folds attending tonight's meeting remotely on a just cause option for individual board members until January first, twenty twenty six, in accordance with government code five four nine five three F, a board member may attend remotely, provided that at least a quorum of the legislative body meets in a single location within the boundaries and jurisdiction. The remote member must publicly disclose before any actions are taken, whether there is an individual eighteen years of age or older present in the room at the remote location and general nature of the members' relationship with the individual. Trust me, Trustee Smith Folds, please disclose before each vote if there's anyone in the room with you. Thank you. And we will start off with item B two, pledge of, pledge of allegiance. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item B three, land and labor embody acknowledgement. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Cho Chen Yo, McWekma, Karkin, Aloney peoples, and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Labor and body acknowledgement. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of black and brown bodies in the building of this country and its, its institutions. I remember that black and brown bodies were born and died working this land against their will for generations. I also acknowledge the continued contribution of the land and labor of survivors over the centuries to today. Of all immigrant labor, including voluntary and voluntary forced and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. Author Dr. Rochelle Rogers Ard, West Contra Costa School District Board of Education Anti-Racism Statement. The governing board is committed to the work of anti-racism, the conscience and active effort to identify, challenge, and correct racial inequities in the systems and institutions within our schools and community. Racism, explicit or implicit, stands in direct conflict with the fundamental principles of district education. To carry district education into the future, we recognize that we must continue to renew, reflect on the roots of racism, and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and racial inequity they produce to have shaped us, our schools and society. The board strives to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism individuals and the board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen our listening and to examine and our examination of racism and oppression, and to develop a strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into the larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our governing board, individually and collectively, is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racism learning environment where each student, staff member, and community partner is respected and valued member of the district community. The governing board is uniquely positioned and is our responsibility to identify, dismantle racist ideas and inequity policies in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racism policies, programs, and practices for our children's education and well-being while building a strong and inclusive school community. The board commits to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding West Contra Costa Unified School District staff, students, community to living these standards of anti-racism in our schools. Board approved on March twenty twenty four. Moving on to item five, superintendent, can we get roll call?
Yes, trustee Gonzalez Hoy.
Good evening, present.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Hernandez.
Good evening, present.
Student trustee Han.
Good evening, present.
Student trustee Miles.
Hello, everyone, present.
Clerk Eliana.
Buenas tardes a todos, presente.
Board President Reckler.
Hello, everyone. I'm present tonight. Thank you.
And that concludes our roll call. Item six, report ratification of closed session. Tonight, since the board is on recess from closed session, there is no report out from the closed session at this time. We will report out on the closed session when it concludes at the end of the evening. Item seven, West Contra Costa School District Public Comment. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board on any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the West Contra Costa Unified School District, but not on tonight's agenda. Public comment will last approximately one hour. The time allotted to each speaker is two minutes. Should additional speakers remain at the conclusion of one hour, public comment may be extended. The time allotted per speaker after the first hour is generally one minute. Individuals wishing to speak, please submit a WCCUSD public comment card, or if participating via Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand in the Zoom app. Prior to the beginning of this item on the agenda, if you are calling in by phone, press star nine. Speaking time should not be transferred from one person to another. There is no substitution of speakers. Speakers can also make public comment again for each discussion and action item on the agenda after staff presentation. The public will have ten minutes per item and one minute per speaker. The same protocols recited above apply. The public comment period is a safe space where diverse viewpoints may be expressed in a civil manner without interruption of intimidation. Please listen attentively to each speaker's comment and respect their time at the podium as if it was your own. Be open to a different point of view if one is offered. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Is there any public comment?
Yes, our first public comment is Don Gosny.
Sorry. Good evening. Tonight I have three items of concern to bring up. First, with the transition from the old website platform to the new, we've all suffered through the issues with not being able to find what we're looking for. We knew this transition would have hiccups, and we also knew that it wasn't going to happen overnight. One of those hiccups I just learned about two days ago. As I understand it, when a document is inserted into the new site, it will no longer have a file name that is recognizable to the viewer. For instance, the file name would no longer be ten twenty five, or ten twenty twenty five CBOC Agenda Packet. It will now have an unrecognizable and unmemorizable number for the file name. That means when, when we, the public, download a file to archive it on our hard drives, we will have to rename those files. What I fear is that this will have members of the public and the media thinking that the district is backing away from whatever faith in transparency they may have built up. Second item has to do with elected representatives making decisions without community input. We often see our elected representatives arriving with their minds already made up. Whatever they might hear from the public when we stand before you is just wasted time and effort because there is nothing we can say or do that you care anything about. The very least, we, we, the public, would like to maintain the illusion that you might care about what we have to say and what we think. We often hear members of the public angry that they're being ignored. It's one thing to hear what, what we have to say, and then it's choosing another option. But do you really want our constituents to walk away believing that you're not even listening to them? And lastly, and this ties into what I just said, when you go straight to a vote without hearing from the public or having a discussion, so we might know your thinking process about an issue, it sends a very bad message. When you rejected my CBOC renewal application a month back, there was no discussion and no call for public comment, even though I had signed up to speak many hours earlier. We all know that whatever I might have said would have, have been for naught since your minds were made up when you arrived. Nonetheless, as a matter of respect, it would have been nice to go through the motions. And while I appreciate the offer to make those comments a month after the vote, it wouldn't have changed the vote. It just continued the feeling.
Our next public comment is Melanie Olson. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Melanie Olson. I'm a parent of twin sophomores at Penole Valley High School, a second grader at Allerhorst Elementary, and I'm also a district school counselor. I wanted to speak to the board today about the Penole Valley Band Program. I've written to many of you as board members several times about my concern that since the band director, Ms. Thorf, went on administrative leave-
I'm sorry, Ms. Melanie Olson, can we get a point of order? We are not able to hear up here.
Um, oh. Okay. Can you hear me?
We could, hold on, we're having trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me? Hello?
That's better. Can you, can you speak again?
Um, yes. Okay, um, I am, I parent. I came to speak about the Penole Valley High School's band program. I've written to many of you as the board members a few times about my concerns that the band director, Ms. Thorf, went on administrative leave September tenth, and since then, they have had no musical director, only rotating non-musical subs under her direction. For the last few years, the program has grown into a very successful, very well-developed musical program, including two performing bands, marching band, pep band, jazz ensemble, a jazz combo, multiple competitions. She's built a very strong program. There is a strong parent organization that's been trying to keep the momentum that Ms. Thorf built. However, I did want to bring to the attention to the board that they are in need of a musical director to keep this program going. And while my personal preference and many, many parents' preferences to have Ms. Thorf back to lead this incredible program, that we understand that that is the information of the leave is not public knowledge, but I would like to encourage the board to help us further this program. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sky Nelson.
Good evening, board. Recently, I shared data that I researched on some of the costs for our restricted programs, special education, foster and homeless students, and how we serve students with disabilities and found that the charter schools in our area do not serve the same range of conditions that we serve. And so there's an incentive, not an incentive, there's a systemic situation where they take less of the cost than we do. And this is something that should be addressed. It's not anybody here's fault. It's not anybody's fault in general. It's not their fault either. But I want to speak plainly for a minute. Dr. Moses, when you suggested, when you told me that you hadn't made the connection that, that, about the contracts for special education being the bulk of the, the outstanding contracts for teacher subs. My experience is, who is in charge of that? Who is aware of that? And Guthrie, I, I, maybe I'm misunderstanding the situation, but Guthrie, Steve Collins, I talked to on the phone a few weeks ago, and he said, you know, the reason for the budget problem with special ed is, is prices have gone up. But prices have not gone up three hundred percent or two hundred fifty percent. It's not inflation. What I'm after is honest accounting, not dollars and cents accounting, but a human English accounting for what's going on. What are the, what are the reasonable reasons for what we're seeing? And that involves real listening from all of us, the community, the unions, the parents, as well as all of you. And the fact that some of these things have slipped by unnoticed by all of us for however long is deeply concerning to me. We're all in this together. I appreciate that. And we need to work together and not just do our jobs, but look deeper. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jean Kinster. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, good morning, or good morning. Good evening, board. I wanted to thank you for taking action and allowing my school to have their vision and hearing earlier in the school year. That happened on September ninth this year. Unfortunately, I have been told by the person, the nurse or the person that did it, that I have at least one child who can't hear properly and at least one child or many that cannot see properly, but I still do not have the list. How am I supposed to give preferential seating? How am I supposed to work with parents to get glasses and things? That was the whole push for having our school have this done so early. And I cannot serve our students above and beyond, after hours, helping them get resources when I don't even know who needs the help. Can you please do something about this for me? Thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Harpreet Asandu.
Good evening, trustees. Actually, I was going to speak on the resolution, but I can make that comment now. Again, thank you for recognizing November as the Sikh Awareness Month. As you're aware, the Sikh religion is quite evident in this community and has been for many decades. So Sikhs in the United States, or particularly in California, Sikhs have contributed greatly to the fabric of our society. There are doctors, engineers, teachers, business owners, and public servants who work every day to uplift the community and to serve with humanity and courage. The education of our students received here in West Contra Costa Unified School District will help them follow these same footsteps to become the future doctors and engineers and teachers. We are gratefully thankful to all the teachers who dedicated and guided us to make this possible. Today actually marks the birth of Gurunanuk, who is the founder of the Sikh religion, which is why most of the community is at the temple today. His message of more than five centuries ago, revolutionary, that all human beings are equal, regardless of gender, religion, or caste, that women and men share the same dignity light, and that God is one dwelling within each heart. His teaching of compassion, service, and unity remains a guiding light for humanity today. We also want to express deep appreciation for the district for its ongoing effort to ensure that every student, especially those who are not fluent in English, receive the support they need to achieve, to achieve the academic success by helping students gain confidence and language fluency. The district is empowering future generation to thrive, contribute to the full diversity of our society. On behalf of the Sikh community, thank you for standing for equality, inclusion, and respect for all faiths and cultures. Your recognition today honors not only the Sikh history, but also the shared values defined by the West Contra Costa community of justice and opportunity. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Alon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Can you guys hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Well, good evening, board, and thank you all for coming to serve our children this late evening. But I just wanted to talk about how we really need to work on a little bit better with communication around how we're going to address things when it comes to the harms that's happening to our children. We're doing a great job on celebrating all the good things that are going wonderful in our district. But our children, I just got information today from a child that's being called, well, we got to say on y'all line the N-word so I won't get beat, but that's not what our children are getting called. They're getting called the real word spelled out and not with the A, with the ER, and they're getting called monkeys. And I just, a child told me that today. So I really am looking at this board to do something about this and not continue to embed these type of harms inside of a policy that this person got paid a lot of money to write and has never met with the parents, the ASAC, the MDAC, SSC, D, DL cap, to really get our feedback on how we can best support our students who are being harmed by racial slurs. And we're not, we're going embedded in racial slurs, but we know the word, they're getting called. And the board needs to do something. I'm complete. And the board needs to do something. I'm complete.
Our next public comment is Marie Anyam.
Thank you to the sped department for providing the first alt app and cameras in the cars. The health, safety, and well-being of students is my priority. As a parent, it's a great relief to track my kids' cards as they're transported. The newly installed cameras are a bonus. I hope these features will be available on the buses. Remember, the students have special needs and varying abilities, and we must make sure they are all supported, safe, and protected. Parents are trusting you with their precious loved ones. Thank you for the excellently ran workshops for iReady and Dibbles. Yesterday at my son's conference, I understood the teacher's review of the Dibble. I hope all schools will soon get laptops that the computer-based programs can be accessible to all students. Other ideas are for workshops on Parent Square, Clever, and Eureka Math. Now, read the Williams Quarterly Report that said all complaints were resolved. It's a lie. Y'all hear me every week talk about it. The report needs to be amended to reflect the truth. The children are still without shade, appropriate size seats, painted recessed area, structure. We can investigation needs to be done into the facility department that continues to lag and delay on sending basic resources to speech. The school with highest students at an elementary site in this district. Why do we not receive resources? Where is the equity? All the students deserve safe and resource sites. I don't accept that because it's a temp site, the resources don't have to be sent. That is baloney. Stop acting like the money comes out of your personal paycheck. It's the students' money, and we demand and need resources. This is my sixth meeting. I will be back to continue advocating. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Well, thank you to everyone who gave public comment tonight. We'll move on to item B9, Agenda Review and Adoption. Does the board have anything that they would like to adjust on the agenda? I'm sorry. Point of order, I'm sorry. We are moving on to standing reports. Is there any standing reports?
Yes, we have UTR. Francis Gortiz, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board members, UTR members, community, and district staff. United Teachers of Richmond comes before you tonight to sound the alarm on what is happening behind the scenes of our statutory impasse procedures and to urge our elected board not to mistake polished presentations from consultants and lawyers for truth or progress. Let's start with the statutory impasse process. As you already know, and I shared with you at the last board meeting, UTR completed its strike authorization vote with 99% participation and 98.4% approval. And WCCUSD has completely outsourced the entire operation of the statutory impasse process. District-level staff have been notably absent from any meaningful role. Instead, every step from scheduling to document preparation has been handed over to high-priced law firms with a long record of union busting tactics. These firms are draining public dollars that should be in classrooms. Instead of investing in students and educators, the district continues to invest in lawyers whose job is to fight the people who make schools run. I want to remind the board that these lawyers work for you, the board, not any district staff, not the superintendent, or any district administrator. UTR bargains with the board, and we encourage all of you to be present in the statutory impasse process. We also want to say that this is not normal. This is not fiscal responsibility, it's a choice. A choice to prioritize outside consultants over community trust, to fund litigation instead of education. And so we caution our board, do not accept the narratives being delivered to you by staff and contractors who have everything to gain from distorting truth. They will tell you that our union is unreasonable, that our demands are unsustainable, and they're just following the law. But the truth is that the law that they claim to follow is the same one that routinely ignore when it benefits them. The quote-unquote fiscal cliffs and structural deficits they warn you about are the same recycled talking points used by failing administrations in Oakland Unified, and we remind you that leadership failures from Oakland should not be imported to West Contra Costa. We've seen what happens when boards and other districts rely on misinformation from the same consultants you're now paying millions to. It leads to cuts, chaos, and a revolving door of leadership, not stability or trust. That's why we're inviting every single one of you to attend the fact-finding panel hearing on November 18th at 9:00 AM at Alvarado School. If you are blocked or removed by district staff, that will speak volumes about transparency and about what's really going on in WCCUSD. Later that same day at 5:00 PM in Richmond, UTR will host a community town hall. There, we will share highlights from our presentation to the fact-finding panel and highlight our own student-centered multi-year projections. Projections grounded in the real needs of students, not fear or misinformation. Our data will show what the district, that the district could achieve, what the district could achieve if it stopped wasting millions on consultants, contractors, and lawyers, and instead invest in fully-staffed, stable schools where educators can stay and students can thrive. We're not fooled by any expensive spin machines that really don't allow us to have a sustainable educational environment for our students and for our communities, and we really urge our board not to be either. You have a choice to believe the people who make their living defending mismanagement, or to believe the educators who dedicate their lives to this community's children. UTR stands ready to fight for the schools our students deserve, and we will continue to do so with truth, transparency, and solidarity. Thank you.
I believe we're concluding.
Thank you to everyone who gave standing reports tonight. Now we will be moving on to item B9, the Agenda Review and Adoption. Does the board have anything that they would like to adjust on the agenda? Okay, we will proceed with the agenda as published. Item B10, Approval of Minutes for October 8th and October 13, 2025. Does anyone have any corrections to the minutes? Okay, we will accept as presented. Moving on to item B11, Resolutions, and that will be done by Rochelle Forrest.
This is Tasha Nesbit sitting in for Rochelle Forrest.
Sorry, Tasha.
That's okay. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education recognizes the month of November 2025 as National Native American Heritage Month and encourages all educational communities to commemorate this occasion with appropriate instructional activities.
We will now move on to items. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Chair, Yana, I can make a motion if you like. Thank you. I move resolution number 2526/42, National Native American Heritage Month.
Smith Folds, second.
Okay, we have trustee Gonzalez Hoi with the motion, and Smith Folds with the second. Can we take roll? Any comments on this item? Okay, seeing no comments. Do we take roll?
Yes, you need to take the vote starting with the student trustees.
Thank you. Trustee Han.
Yes.
Trustee Miles.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Regler.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi.
Yes.
And Yana, yes. Moving on to resolution number 252643, Sisk American Awareness and Appreciation Month.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education recognizes and acknowledges the significant contribution made by the Californians of Sikh heritage to our state and via adoption of this resolution. Sikhs to afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared principle of Sikh Americans, their religion, and the tenets of their faith, and the important role that Sikh Americans play in furthering mutual understanding and respect among all peoples.
Thank you. Do we have any comments on this item?
Smith Folds moves item number, resolution number 2526-43, Sikh American Awareness and Appreciation Month.
Do we have public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Okay.
Sorry, Chair and Yana, I think we do have one public comment.
Okay, can we put one minute on the time? Two minutes.
Go ahead, Mr. Harpreet Asandu.
I think you have meant to put this, my statement before, but thank you for this resolution. I just want to add just a quick two more points, something I reflected before, on the fluency of English learners. I was honored to be the Parents Advisory President for the school for 11 years way back when for the school district. It was something that was important to us to make sure that all our students become fluent in English, to be able to be progressing forward. And the other point I really want to make quickly is I had just recently been appointed to the AC Board of Directors. So obviously for Ward 1, which is Albany, El Cerrito, Richmond, and San Pablo. So I know that many of our children use AC Transit, and I would look forward to having a meeting with the board and with some others, with staff as well, to make sure that if there's any need for our students in terms of AC Transit, how we can work together to alleviate some of the problems or things that you may need for AC Board Directors and AC Transit to know from the school district. So thank you for the recognition, and good night.
Okay, we'll move on to the motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have motion by Smith Folds, second, and by Cynthia Hernandez. Do we have any further comments?
Could you explain to us what this motion means?
It is just approval for the resolution number 2526, Sisk American Awareness and Appreciation Month.
Thank you.
Okay, so trustee Han.
Yes.
Trustee Miles.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Regler.
Regler, yes.
Trustee Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi.
Yes.
And Yana, yes. So we'll move on to resolution number 2526-44, American Education Week, November 17 through 21.
Now, therefore, be resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education recognizes November 17 through 21st, 2025, as American Education Week.
Do we have any comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Do we have any comments from the board? Can I have a motion?
Smith Folds moves resolution number 2526-44, American Education Week.
Second.
Okay, so we have the resolution by Smith Folds, second, and by Gonzalez Hoi. Board member Han.
Yes.
Board member Miles.
Yes.
Board member Hernandez.
Yes.
Board member Regler.
Regler, yes.
Board member Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Board member Gonzalez Hoi.
Yes.
And Yana, yes. So now we will move on to items, see consent items. Does any board member wish to pull items from the consent or discuss later this evening? Okay, well, we will set the the consent items as presented. And now moving on to superintendent communication. Superintendent Connor, this is your item.
Yes, I'm ready. Thank you. I want to say it's busy. It's been a very busy month, and we are having a great time learning with students and with each other, so I just want to go ahead and get started. Next slide, please. I want to begin this evening. If we can take a moment of silence. We recently lost a longtime educator, longtime principal within our district, Stephanie Serrano. She was truly dedicated to West Contra Costa and was allowed to serve in many capacities, including as an extensive support needed special education teacher, program specialist, assistive technology teacher, and principal of Aloni Elementary School. She will be fondly remembered as one of the kindest, hardest, kind-hearted people in our community and will be missed by all who knew her. If we could just take a moment, let's to have a moment of silence for Mrs. Serrano. Thank you. She was a dear friend of mine as well, and this is a very sad loss for all of us. Next slide, please. Onto our announcements. Next slide. I want to recognize work that is, our folks that we need to acknowledge. Thank you for the resolutions earlier, but we also want to acknowledge that this is National School Psychology Week. So if you see a school psychologist, stop them, tell them thank you, and give them a big hug. We appreciate the work that they do on behalf of our students. We also want to acknowledge next week is Veterans Day. We are thankful for the service of all of our veterans. Just to acknowledge a veteran during this time. I do also want to lift up and remind you that there is no school for students on November 10th. So Monday, November 10th, no school. Tuesday, November 11th is Veterans Day. I also want to acknowledge National Homeless Youth Awareness Month that is happening for the month of November. And finally, wanting to acknowledge that this is Celebrate Your Retired Teachers Week. And so all of our retired educators who still are either working within our schools or supporting our schools, we just want to acknowledge them. Thank you. Next slide. I do want to offer a labor negotiations update. On November 17th and 18th, the West Contra Costa Unified School District will begin the formal fact-finding process with its two largest employees' unions, the Teamsters and United Teachers of Richmond. We will be reviewing proposals, examining financial information, and receiving recommendations towards a fair settlement. The process is expected to conclude around November 28th. The district values this independent review and remains hopeful for a fair agreement without a strike, while also preparing to keep schools open and minimize disruption for students and families by maintaining safe campuses, providing meals, and continuing learning in the event that a strike occurs. For additional information about fact-finding, please visit our negotiations updates page on our district website. Next slide. We do want to take a moment just to lift up and be sure that our families are aware. We are very aware of the government shutdown and the impact on SNAP benefits for some of our families. And we do want to lift up the fact that we have updated our parent resources page. That page does include information about food assistance and emergency resources, includes information about our community produce program, mobile pantry distributions across our area, partner food pantries and soup kitchens, as well as a senior food program. So please check that page for regular updates. Next slide, please. I do want to also share a message from Supervisor John Joya. The Contra Costa County is stepping up to help our neediest county residents due to the federal government's failure to fund its Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, benefits, which is called CalFresh here in California. SNAP serves one in eight Americans and is a major part of our nation's social safety net. On Tuesday, November fourth, the Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors voted in favor to allocate up to twenty-one million dollars out of their rainy day reserves to fund these benefits for the month of November. We are able to do this because of our county's responsible fiscal management and triple-A bond rating. Our Employment and Human Resources Department has developed a plan to distribute debit cards to CalFresh enrollees who live in our county. These debit cards, whose value will be similar to a family's existing benefits amount, will be distributed soon at a date to be announced at our busiest Employment and Human Services Department lobbies. They're located in Richmond, Hercules, Pleasant Hill, and Antioch. Food boxes for needy families, even those who are not CalFresh enrollees, will be available starting Monday, November third, at those same four locations. Needy families, regardless of immigration status, are welcome to come. If anyone needs food now, they should go to the Contra Costa Solano Food Bank's Find Food in My City link to see where to pick up free food near where you live. Thank you. Next slide. Actually, can you go back? I just want to, can we give an applause for our Contra Costa County Supervisors, our county, for being able to support our families in the way that they are choosing to do right now? Thank you. Now, next slide. Just wanted to acknowledge that. Just to give you an update, we have shifted. We talked about my first thirty days. Now we're into the first hundred days. Lots of work to be done. So we finished that phase. We're moving into our community communication plan and had a chance to have a great conversation with our communications folks around an upcoming Real Talk podcast. We were talking about and sharing information about the great things that are happening in our district, as well as some of the challenges that we need to discuss. We are looking at strategic staffing retention data for continuous improvement, and we had a wonderful opportunity to look at our site level data, as well as our attendance data with our principals this last principals' meeting yesterday. We're working towards curriculum instruction coherence and leadership development, so more information to come. Next slide, please. We just read that one, that one, and then that one. Now we want to spotlight our students. Next slide. We had All Student Congress. Our All Student Congress had our kickoff meeting on October twenty-eighth at Dejawn Middle School. We welcomed over twenty students there representing both middle and high schools. It was a great opportunity for them to start to plan how they're going to meet, meeting in person and virtually. And really, thank you to Ms. Tiara for her excellent work. Thank you to our student trustees who are leading that group. I understand that, and they will share more, but our student trustees also had a little trip. They've got a long day today. They've spent their day in Sacramento today, learning from other, I won't steal your thunder. You'll tell us more in a minute. Okay, next slide, please. Ella Hurst Elementary celebrated their harvest festival with a petting zoo, pumpkin patch, and class sing-alongs. Next slide, please. We had Cameron Elementary School, and their pumpkin patch fall is my favorite time of year. And so this is a great fun time for our students as well. We had our LIFT program, Learning with Infants, Toddlers, and Families Together. Had a pumpkin patch on October thirtieth. Over forty-five students attended. It was a great time for all. Next slide. Our STEAM night at Riverside Elementary on October, excuse me, twenty-third. The Fab Lab and Riverside Elementary came together to host a family STEAM night. Great opportunity for our students to really begin to engage, our youngest learners to begin to engage in STEAM activities. Next slide. We also had our California Science Education Conference. So science teachers from six of our high schools attended the California Science Education Conference in Palm Springs, October seventeenth through the nineteenth. We had Richmond High's physics teacher there along with our district science coordinator, Johnny Milwaukee, and they presented to over fifty educators on their STEAM activities and science activities that are happening across our district. So thank you. Next slide. We also have hosted on October eighteenth Greenwood Academy in partnership with the Golden State Warriors, hosted a mental health awareness basketball camp that focused on male mentorship and wellness. Students from both Greenwood Academy and Dejawn Middle School attended the workshops, as well as had lunch and a career panel that day. So thank you for that, and thank you for the partnership with the Warriors. Next slide, please. We also have the Enza High School that celebrated their Latin A Heritage Month. Just having just a great time. They had their Spirit Week that featured Flag Day, Western Wear, Casual attire day. They spotlighted Latinx leaders, history, and music. The celebration ended with Aztec dancers, capoeira demonstrations, and Latin music performances. So thank you so much for that great celebration. Next slide. I also want to lift up and celebrate. We often have heard the fabulous music that comes from El Cerrito High School's jazz band. But I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the teacher of that band, a longstanding educator here in West Contra Costa who has done amazing things with the music program at El Cerrito High School. Keith Johnson was selected as this year's recipient of the Paul Shigowin Jazz Educator Award. It's a state award recognizing outstanding achievement in jazz education and performance. Mr. Johnson will be honored at the awards reception on January fifteenth at six-thirty in Sacramento, and we are trying to get there. There is a link, so when this when this, goodness, this presentation is posted, please take a look at the link and consider going on up. The link will open on November fifth. Next slide. Since we last met, next slide. Almost there, almost there. Not done yet. Oh, okay, yes. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay. Oh, it didn't add. Hmm. Hmm. We had an awesome principals' meeting yesterday. There was a whole commentary that will be added in there before it's posted. We talked about data. We talked about our site level data, our LPAC data, our CASP data. We talked about our attendance data as well, and our attendance campaign focused on math education, as well as, I know it was mentioned, what are we doing around slurs and negative comments that are being made to students. We had a chance as site leaders to talk about what we are doing around the anti-slur policy. What are some best practices and what's happening in our schools? We looked at our data, where we have captured when those comments are being made in our classrooms and in our schools. We're able to really understand where it's happening and when it's happening, and at what levels and grade levels it's happening. But then also had a chance to talk through what are some of our strategies to address that. I think that some of our schools are doing amazing work. Just want to say thank you to all of our principals. It was great. We had probably about six or five or six, six or seven principal presentations, and so learning from each other is key. Next slide, please. Lots of other events happening around the district. On October twenty-ninth, I got invited. It's not team time, it's tea time. They actually had fascinators and everything. Had a chance to sit and talk with some of our community leaders and really hear their voices. What are the challenges that they're facing, and what can the district do to support students? We also had STEAM the Streets, which was actually a beautiful presentation on career development for young people. Thank you for Clerk Anyana was there, Trustee Smith Folds was there, and our Board President Reckler was there. So it was a really fun and interesting event. On November first, I had a chance to attend the East Bay Center for Performing Arts Gala, and there was a recognition and presentation for one of our former students, Jasmine Jaswan, I'm sorry, I say Jasmine, Jaswan Veal, daughter of Tanise, yes. And Jaswan is a former student here in West Contra Costa, who is now a graduate of Howard University and back working at the Health Center at Hercules High School. That is amazing. So I just, lots of things to celebrate, lots of challenges, I know, but we have lots to celebrate as well. But having a chance to witness that, lifting up of actually Teresa Griffin from STEGE was there and was honored as an educator who helped really bring Jaswan to the Center for Performing Arts, but also just lifted her up as a young person, helping her find connections. It was a beautiful, beautiful event. Finally, November third, I was unable to attend, but trustee Gonzalez Hoi, trustee Anyana, and Board President Reckler were all present for the Contra Costa County School Board Association, which our trustee Gonzalez Hoi serves as their president. You see the picture here with that team from across our county, and Rob Bontev was the, our Attorney General for California, was the guest speaker for the evening. Thank you. Next slide. Other events around the district. We've had a chance to meet and talk with East Bay Mud. They've got resources for schools, for teachers. Want to get that information out. We've met with our system support collaborative that is meeting with our leaders, city leaders from across West Contra Costa to talk about, actually, our discussion was focused around attendance. On October twenty-eighth, our District Budget Engagement Committee met and came together. I just wanted to let you know, the beginning of the year, we talked about our fiscal stabilization meetings. Take a look. We've checked off quite a few. There are still many more to come, but we're excited about the work that we're doing. Thank you to Dr. Moses and her team for just leading really, really engaging conversations around our budget and better understanding of where we stand, what our fiscal landscape looks like. Next slide, please. I also want to lift up and say a great job to Dr. Greenwood and her team. We had over a hundred and sixty attendees at our job fair that was held about a week ago, October twenty-fifth. We do have a number of positions that are still vacant that we are working to fill, as well as filling positions for next year as well. We remain committed to hiring passionate individuals who are dedicated to helping our students succeed. So thank you for the great work with the job fair as well. Next slide. So what's coming up? Next slide. Our next Board of Education. I changed this slide, too. I apologize, you guys. It didn't, it didn't translate somehow. But I do want to lift up not just the next Board of Education meeting. We will be hosting a joint Board CBOC meeting on November twelfth. That is going to be amazing. We are going to host that meeting at Lake Elementary School, which has a brand-new kitchen and brand-new NPR, and we will be able to have a tour of the new facility, which if you haven't seen it, it's beautiful, and it's an engaging learning environment for all of our students. That meeting will be happening on November twelfth from six-thirty to eight-thirty. I even think that the the contractors, the construction folks are springing for food for our, to cook up in our kitchen for the meeting. So we'll have a chance to see the kitchen in action, have a chance to enjoy that time together. Next slide, please. Please mark your calendars. We will be doing, this is an internal conversation around our African-American Student Success Network. We are onboarding for that, and that is a statewide network that we are joining, focusing on African-American student success. Again, no school on November tenth. Veterans Day is also no school November eleventh. We will be meeting with Senator Eric Wood very soon. I forgot the date. It's, it's not in my brain, but we will be meeting. I'll let everyone know. Also, I was invited to attend the Learning Policy Institute that's led by Dr. Linda Darling-Hammond. They will be doing a walk-through in Oakland. And so Board, if you're interested, let me know. We can all go together. And then finally, on November twenty-first, we have our African-American Male Symposium. Next slide, please. Pinole Valley High School's band. They have a night planned with the Warriors. Tickets are available. They are very reasonable for Warriors game. Tickets must be sold. Deadline to purchase is November seventh. So please take a look. Let's get the word out about celebrating our Pinole Valley High School band at a Warriors game in December, but tickets must be sold by November seventh. Next slide, please. We talked about All Student Congress. Next slide, please. We have our upcoming budget and finance meetings, and also our D L cap is coming. The D L cap will be meeting on November eleventh, virtually. Are we sure they're meeting on November eleventh, virtually? No.
Ah, simple fix. Plug it in. Yes, thank you for the opportunity to clarify. It is Thursday, November thirteenth due to the Veterans Day holiday.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm looking at this going, my brain is telling me this is not right. And then we also have our upcoming budget meetings, both our District Budget Engagement Committee, as well as our Fiscal Stabilization Planning meetings that are coming up soon. Next slide, please. Almost there, you guys, for your awareness. Next slide. Sorry, I can't make it any faster. I tried. Don't forget, emergency cards, parents, where power school information. Continuing to lift up our anti-slur and anti-racism policy. If you are not familiar with it or you have not read it, please take time to engage and understand that, as well as our cell phone policy. I'm hearing reports, things are looking better and feeling better at our school sites around the stopping the use of cell phones during the school day. Please pay attention to our immigration policy and resources that are available on our district website. If there are families that are in need or need additional support, we list out our community resources that are available to support immigrant families, and as well as our policies and the work that we're doing to make sure that students and families and staff feel safe and secure in our buildings. Also, we have our visitor sign-in policy, and as trustee Smith Folds likes to remind us, take care of your Chromebooks. Next slide. Almost there. Fiscal Fridays is coming up. If you haven't checked it out, please do. Always really good information. Next slide. We will be talking about this tonight, but our new facilities use permit process is in place. It opened on October thirtieth for applications for January to March of next year. Next slide. And finally, enroll in preschool today. We've got big futures for our littlest learners. Please make sure that you are enrolling. Next slide. And there are lots of ways to get involved. This will be posted on our website for your information. And next slide is the last slide. Any questions? There was one about the African American Student Network. Um, that will be on Friday. It's an internal conversation, but I will definitely send you the link. Um, Trustee Smith Foles, if you'd like to join us. Any other questions? Thank you very much. That ends my report.
Well, thank you Superintendent Cotton for tonight's report. Really informative. Uh, we'll move on to our action items tonight. Um, Item E, the public will have an opportunity to make public comment on each action agenda item after staff's presentation. The time allotted for public comment on each action item will be no more than 10 minutes and one minute per speaker. So we'll move on to Item E1, Student Discipline on the stipulated expulsion case number 252602.
Chair Iniana, I make a motion that we approve the stipulated expulsion court case number 252602.
Reckler will second.
So we have Trustee Gonzalez Hoy making a motion and Trustee Reckler second. Board Member Sa, Aminha? Board Member Han?
Yes.
Board Member Miles?
Yes.
Board Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Board Member Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Board Member Smith Foles?
Smith Foles, yes.
Board Member Gonzalez Hoy?
Yes.
And Board Member Yana with a yes. So we'll move on to Item E2, Termination of Need for Contract Emergency Action Pursuant to Board of Education Resolution Number 2425-68. Terminate the need for continued emergency action pursuant to Board of Education Resolution Number 2425-68.
Good evening Superintendent, Board and Community. Um, tonight, we're asking for your approval to terminate the need for the emergency action at El Cerrito High School. On October 27th, at about 2:00 AM, we were able to complete the emergency work needed to restore the permanent power at El Cerrito High School. Um, we are completing some final training and documentation for the project. And as soon as that's complete, we'll do a final report for the project, um, that we'll share broadly. Um, but we have completed all of the work and we are on permanent power. Therefore, there is no longer a need for the emergency, and so we ask for your approval tonight.
Okay, do we have any board comment? Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Going to have a motion?
I move Item E2, Termination of Need for Continued Emergency Action pursuant to the Board of Education Resolution Number 2425-68.
Reckler will second.
So it was moved by Smith Foles, seconded by Trustee Reckler. Um, for Board Member Han?
Yes.
Board Member Miles?
Yes.
Board Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Board Member Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Board Member Smith Foles?
Smith Foles, yes.
And we have Board Member Gonzalez Hoy. Absent. Absent. And Iniana, yes. So, um, this passes. We'll move on to Item F, Discussion Items and Reports. The public will also have an opportunity to make public comment on each discussion agenda item after the staff presentation. The time allotted for public comment on each discussion item will be no more than 10 minutes and one minute per speaker. So F1, New Process for Facility Use Presentation.
Thank you, Clerk, thank you Clerk Iniana. We're waiting for the presentation to be brought up. Thank you, Genesis. Good evening, um, Clerk Iniana, President Reckler, Trustees of the Board of Education. Um, I was asked to bring forward, um, a presentation, just sharing, uh, the facility's use processes, uh, as there have been some adjustments. Next slide. So, last week, or earlier this month, we rolled out new policies that came in, that were enacted last week. And we want to share those with the Board and the community this evening. The new policies include some clarification of language around prioritization, um, a streamlining of the process for scheduling, um, a universal application acceptance date, uh, starting date, uh, new processes for identifying available facilities and approval issued by the Facilities Department. And then also, we want to just reiterate our, um, commitment to honoring our community partnerships. Next slide. Um, so this first slide, um, just shares that there is a Policies and Procedures Manual for the Facility's Use Permitting Process. That manual is linked to this slide, and it has been updated to provide a clear understanding of our procedures, uh, for facilities rentals across our district. Next slide. So I've pulled some of the language from our new policy, um, manual, just to share publicly and, uh, for clarification. So we have provided, um, additional language for prioritization categories. Um, I lifted two important aspects of this section of the use manual. Uh, one is the authority, just stipulating that, um, the District Facility Scheduling Office has the sole authority to grant use of the school facilities at each district school. This authority is granted in the Board Policies. Um, if a conflict in scheduling does arrive, the Facilities Office shall have the authority to reschedule or cancel a requested, requested use. For any reason the office deems necessary. Um, the second thing that we'd like to lift up is, uh, a prioritization for facilities, um, permitting. Um, first priority is given to district and district schools, uh, for events within our, our district. Second priority is city government request within district boundaries. Third priority is nonprofit organizations, clubs, or associations and entities that have an official organization address within district bound, boundaries and serving more than 50% of our students. The fourth priority is other nonprofit organizations, clubs, associations, or entities, um, outside of our district boundaries. And then finally, uh, the last categories, the category for applications is for-profit outside entities. Next slide. Uh, so one of the things that is, um, happening currently is that we've streamlined the scheduling processes. All users, including school-related groups, must file an application for facility's use permits. Uh, school program contractors schedule their permits, uh, for the entire calendar year in order to serve our students. Um, non-school-related facilities use permits, uh, those have two opening periods. October 30th, we open the reservation rentals for the first half of the year, January to June. And then April 30th, we open the applications for the second half of the year, July to December permits. All applicants must reapply for new permits at the conclusion of their scheduled usage. Next slide. Um, we also are, um, rolling out new procedures with this universal application acceptance. Uh, first, we establish the date that all, um, of our community partners will be able to submit their applications so that everybody, um, can have the same window with which to be considered. Um, at the same time, uh, we have made a commitment to, within two weeks of the submission of those applications, to notify the applicant of their status. Uh, we also, um, want to lift up that applications are considered on a first-come, first-served basis, um, aligned with the rental group priority level. So priority, um, prioritization and date submitted are important when granting those permits. Um, in the case that we have two applications received on the same day with the same prioritization level for the same facility, uh, district staff will conduct a blind lottery process in the presence of the applicants, um, who meet that criteria in order to have a blind lottery selection process to assign the field or facility. Um, so we want to lift up that October 30th starts the applications for, um, the first half of the year. And we are really pleased to announce that we received over a hundred applications last week when we opened that window. And we are in the process of reviewing those and con, conducting, um, the dates for the blind lottery for facilities that are in high demand. Next slide. Um, so we also wanted to ensure that we have a streamlined process for identifying which facilities are available for community use. It starts with our site administrators. Um, they have to enter their programs and events based upon their, um, annual calendar into Facilitron, which is our, um, digital application for managing not only the availability of our facilities, but also the application process. Um, we ask that they enter those as soon as possible so that they block aside the time that's needed for school events and activities. Uh, and then we also ask our athletic directors to implement game time so that games are blocked, uh, for our fields and gyms so that our, our school, um, interscholastic sports activities have their dedicated time. Uh, we've also implemented universal practice schedules at our high school so that we can, uh, streamline, um, the process for our community partners of when our fields will be available for rent. Um, and then we want to highlight that school activities that must use the fi, the fields or the gyms or the theaters, um, we ask that our sites enter those as soon as possible if they are planned later in the year. Um, school events are prioritized and school facilities will be made, made available for school events first. Every effort will be made not to cancel any permits after issued. Um, however, we do sometimes have to, uh, make adjustments for our school activities and events. Next slide. Um, we have, uh, shifted the process. Previously, final approval was given by the sites, but in order to ensure that our procedures are followed, um, strictly and that everyone has an equal opportunity to access, um, the field based upon their application status, uh, the Business Services Department is asking that sites verify the available facility and that the final approval of, uh, permit issuance will be done centrally in order to ensure that the process is equitable and that the timelines and timestamps are followed. Next slide. Uh, we are committed to honoring our community partnerships. And, um, we are proud to serve alongside our partners in order to serve our youth. And with that, I think that concludes the, is that the last slide? All right, that concludes the presentation. Um, happy to take any questions you may have about the process.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Do we have any board comments? Trustee Reckler?
Thank you. I have a question. So how are you determining, uh, I, I think one of the big sticking points that I heard is determining addresses in, in jurisdiction. So how are you determining addresses in jurisdiction? And then is it addresses in jurisdiction and serving 50% or more of WCCUSD students? Or is it or address in jurisdiction and then you can serve whoever you want?
It's a very good question. So one of the things we're trying to do in our partnerships with our communities is make things clearer, but also, um, it isn't our, our, um, intent to police them. What we'd like to do is use the official address for the organizations on their official business paperwork to establish their address. I, I must admit that many of our partners have been using our facilities for a really long time and they have already, um, addresses within our Facilitron system. We are going to need to work with staff. Our Facilities Use Department is a department of one. We have one employee who manages all of the facility's use needs. And I don't think that in this moment, we are going to move quickly enough with asking for their official paperwork. But the intent is, by the time we roll out the next session, that we're looking at their actual 5043C paperwork. Is that the right thing? Um, and comparing that address with the address we have on file for Facilitron. Um, we are asking for their commitment that they serve our students, but we aren't able to access their personal information or verify their rosters. So, um, we're really relying on the trust and partnership of our community organizations in order to ensure that they're serving our community and, um, submitting that paperwork to verify their address within our community. That is our intent.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any more questions from our board? I have a question. So I just kind of going off of what Trustee Reckler was talking about, um, and getting clarity over where it says, uh, 2.3 nonprofit organization, clubs, associations, and entities with official organizational addresses. So that means that the organization has to be a s, organization with perimeters in West Contra Costa?
Yeah.
With the current, I mean, fiscal address in West Contra Costa?
Yes, currently, the Facilitron system asks for them to self-report their addresses. It is our intent to begin to cross-reference those addresses with their actual reported address on their business status. We aren't there yet, but that is the intent. Currently, we're just asking that they report an accurate address to us. Did that answer your question?
It, it, it did answer my question. My, I think it's, you know, just a question and a concern when it comes to serving 50% or more of West Contra Costa students. I know that we have a lot of organizations that have fiscal addresses outside the, the city limit, the, the parameters of West Contra Costa that come in and work in our schools and serve our schools. Um, and I think once we're saying that they have to have a fiscal address within the parameters, even though they're serving our students, does that take them then to the next scope of priority, non-priority level?
Correct. So if they don't have an address within our district boundaries, they, they drop down to priority four as opposed to priority three.
And that was one of the new, the newer changes on our, or has there always been a policy in place?
It has always been a policy. The new, the new change is the verification of the address and the serving of our students. Those are the additions to this policy.
Okay. That was my last question. Do we have any public comment on this?
Yes, we do. We have Sky Nelson.
Hello, Board. Thank you for your time. Thank you for this. This is, uh, seems like a great action. I'm not fully familiar with the, the argument about the field, but I, I have been aware of it about eight months, and I, I'm, this seems like the right move. I want to lift up, in your words, Dr. Moses, what was brought up in the meeting, the budget meeting about going into the community. If we are going into the community as leaders, to, to city council meetings, to other types of community meetings, we would have known about this issue long, long before, I believe. And so waiting for folks who are frustrated to come here, um, is, is the option we chose. But we could be out there just being part of the community more. And from that, making connections that, who knows how we get to be served by those connections? Not just when we need money for parcel tax or votes, but getting out there and serving just by listening. There's too much formality and not enough action. I'd like to see more on the streets. Uh, what can we do differently? Thank you.
Do we have any more public comment on this item?
That's it for public comment.
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation. Uh, thank you for all the public comment. And we will now move on to Item G, uh, reconvene to closed session, disclosure of items to be discussed in closed session.
Clerk Iniana, I'm sorry. We, we have to do comments now on that item.
Oh, final comments on this item?
Did you ask if you did? I apologize if I didn't hear that.
I did. I asked for comments, for board comments.
I didn't hear that. I apologize.
Okay. Okay, so we're now, um, do you have any comments on this?
I don't. Now you're just like really foolish. Uh, so, never mind.
Okay, so we were now, um, reconvening to closed session, the disclosure of items to be discussed in closed session. Government Code 5495-7.7, Conference for Labor Negotiations at our employee organizations. So we will now move on to reconvene for...
May I also add employment evaluation?
Oh, unemployment evaluation. Thank you for that. So we will adjourn into closed session and reconvene for open session at 9:30? 9:30, we're hoping? Okay, well, we'll reconvene at...
Or we can come out at 9:30 and extend the vote.
Yes.
Extend the meeting.
Yeah, we reconvene at 9:30. We're being hopeful. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. We are back at 9:55, and we will need to extend our meeting tonight. Do I have a motion to extend?
Yes, thank you. I'll move that we extend until 10:40.
Reckler will second.
So we have a motion to extend by Gonzalez-Hoy, seconded by Reckler. Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And Trustee Yanah is a yes.
And a no.
Trustee Smith Foles is a no.
Motion passes, and we will reconvene at 9:40? I mean, 10:40, sorry. He said...
We should come back around 10:30 because we still need to report out a closed session and just do the final little things. So back at 10:30.
Okay, we'll be back at 10:30. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. We are back in from closed session. We have no report out from closed session. So we are now moving on to item H, comments from the Board of Education. And then, do we have any comments from the Board? Item I, the next scheduled Board of Education meeting, the next regular Board meeting is scheduled for November 19th, 2025, at Avonia de John Middle School. And a joint Boards BLC meeting is scheduled for November 12th at Lake Elementary School. Moving on to item J, the adjournment. We are now adjourned at 10:28 p.m. Good evening, everyone.
You did a good job.
I wanted to do that.